I'll move to approve the agenda as amended.
Seconded.
Moved in a second to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Has everybody had a chance to check the meeting, the minutes from our meeting on September 10th? Any corrections or changes? Then the minutes will stand approved as submitted. Okay, and there's week four. Okay, I don't, Joshua, our planner, and the consultants from Blue Coast, our Blue Coast, Blue Coast Consultants, we had a public meeting last week, or two weeks ago, and to recap the results of the shoreline study that we did last year, and then to gather information for the coastal adaptation plan we're doing right now. Joshua and the consultants did an excellent job, complete, shortened to the point, so most of the time could be spent with the few people that showed up, very few people that showed up. I'm surprised that there's not anybody from the Front Street businesses that come to these shoreline meetings, but I don't know. There was probably about 10 people there that were not on our staff or the consultants. But we, even though it was a few people, we got a lot of good input. They did that thing where they put about six, six big sheets of paper around the room. Each sheet had a very specific question that they were asking, and then everybody had sticky notes, as many as they wanted to write what they thought about it, what they would prioritize under each subject, and how they'd like to see us move forward. So the consultants will take this information and use it in their collection of data to study when they're setting priorities for our community. The Island County Economic Development Commission has a new executive director. Her name is Christina Hines. I went and attended my first meeting with her last week or a couple of weeks ago. I'll just read you, since I don't know her personally yet, I will read you just a very short part of the press release that went out about it. The Economic Development Council for Island County is excited to announce the appointment of Christina Hines as its new executive director. Christina brings over two decades of experience in business advisory, small business consulting, communications, marketing, and human resources, with a proven track record of supporting economic growth and fostering community engagement. Christina holds a Masters of Art in Mass Communications with a specialization in social media and digital marketing from the University of Florida, a Bachelor of Arts in International Relations from the University of Delaware. She is also a graduate of the Leadership Woodbee Program and is a trained mediator through Washington District Resolution Center of Skagit Island and St. Helmut Counties. So, like I said, I've only been in one meeting with her, but we are very much, she sounds very qualified to continue the work that Sharon Savington has done for the last six years as our EDC Director. Joe, Jesse, and I held four interviews, two, interviews two, we, two, yesterday, to fill a new position of a, of a public works tech. It's not really a new position, but this is a new, this will be a new FTE. It's not replacing somebody that's left. This position has been in our budget all year long, but Joe has waited until, you know, until he thought it was really necessary to hire that person. We had some good interviews, and Joe offered the job to someone today. That person is checking on his current employment, and he will give us an answer tomorrow. So hopefully, we'll have a new person coming onto that team soon. I think I told you last time, I had sent out a request for proposals for on-call surveying and hearing examiner services. I had hoped to have those on the agenda today. They came in Monday, last, not yesterday, but last Monday, and got two for the hearing examiner, and, and the only one I can consider is unusual, so I've, I've had to talk to Nikki about that, and I want to talk to the person itself, and got five for on-call survey. So it's wasn't, so it took, it's taken me a little bit longer to go through the evaluation of them and do some reference checking. So those will definitely be on the agenda next time.
Mayor?
Yes.
So the current hearing examiner is leaving?
He left a while ago.
Oh, he did?
Yeah. He, he was, you know, we have between zero and two hearing exam, hearing a year.
Yeah.
So we're not, so I think he was just overly busy and was getting rid of some of his smaller clients. Luckily, I did get another one that would do, gave, their proposal included a price per case, but like another proposal I got, even though my RFP clearly said that we have between zero and two hearings a year, they wanted a $3,000 a month retainer, and just can't, can't make that work to spend $3,600 a year to maybe not have...
$36,000.
$36,000 to maybe not have a single hearing examiner. So that's the kind of thing I'm having to work on. It's taken me a little bit longer. That's it for really, there's been lots of stuff going on, everybody's very busy, but before our next meeting, I just want to tell you about a few things that are happening. The Ferry, Wash Dot is having a public meeting on ferries tomorrow night. It's virtual at 6 o'clock to talk about the status of the new ferries, their continued efforts to hire and train more people, and to answer route questions. Their, their meetings, you have to register in advance. I can send you guys that information if anybody's interested, it's 6 to 7:00 or 6 to 7:30. I'll, I'll go ahead and send it to you. We'll just leave that up to you. And a reminder that we have a budget workshop next Monday, September 30th, from 10:00 to 1:00 at the Red Hall, and this will be a budget workshop to go over our capital facilities projects and large projects for next year, and just discuss some, some, a few other budget issues while we're, and then the following workshop will be about actually looking at the actual budget with this information in it. Okay?
This will be at the Red Hall?
Red Hall.
What time is that? 10 to 1?
10 to 1. Or 10 to whenever we get finished. It might not take three hours, I'm not sure. Okay, let's see. And just, we'll note that Island County Historical Society, AKA our museum, will be holding their annual dinner and auction, and celebrating their 75th anniversary this year.
Oh.
I know. That auction is, that auction and dinner is October 5th. It starts at 4 o'clock. I'm sure it's up at the Elks in Oak Harbor, like they almost all are, and tickets, they still have some tickets available online. And then just to say, without going into a lot of detail, because we might hear about it later in the meeting, there are all kinds of activities that are happening in town the month of October. So you can check out the Chois, the Historic Waterfront Association, practically magic website, to find out about their activities, and then you can look at Chambers' website to find out about their activities and all the other activities going on in Central Woodbee Island. The Chamber also has all of Chois' activities on their site.
The museum auction, not commercial, just happens to move.
You know, I don't know, but I want to say, I think 150. I think, I think. Okay, that's, that's the end of my report. Is there any questions? Okay. Next item on our agenda is audience input. This is an opportunity to talk to the council for no more than five minutes. If you have an issue you want to discuss that's not on the agenda, and if you leave longer than that, we really encourage people to send in their, their comments in writing, so we have time to digest them. Does anybody in the room tonight would like to participate in audience input?
You know, it's not just what's on the agenda, isn't it? It is, doesn't have a public hearing?
Right, right.
Oh, yeah.
It's not more than anything.
Yeah, they can talk about whatever they want. Yeah, and this, but if there's a, they can't, if it's on the agenda for a public hearing, then they talk during a...
But there's nothing on that.
Okay.
Does anybody in the room have any audience input? Anybody online? If you do, you can unmute yourself.
Let's do it.
Just down in the corner.
Well, he's still there. The screen's not black. Okay, I'm going to take that that we have no audience input this evening, and we will move right into our new business. The first item on our, on our agenda is to approve Cecil Sterman's long plat. Joshua, I totally did not know that Joshua wasn't going to be at the meeting tonight. He is at his Oak Harbor meeting. He's a member of the Oak Harbor Housing Commission. So he has sent us a very detailed staff report, talking about the process and what we're doing. We've gone through the, the short and long process with Mr. Sterman's on some of his other properties in the MOA area. The staff has been working on it and working on the as built, and feels that it's ready to be approved. I guess I would say, do any, do the council members have questions?
I have a question. And I was hoping Joshua would be here, but, and you've been copied on this stuff?
Yes, yes.
That he sent. I didn't actually get an email from our attorney that said she was fine with, with, I'm assuming she is, but I never saw that.
Okay. I didn't know, Joshua was copying me on everything, and I asked him if he, if he had sent you the copy.
He did.
He did, oh, you didn't see that?
He did, but I didn't see where Nikki had said, okay, I'm fine with it.
Okay, in her email of yesterday at 4:00 PM, she said, I think the reality is that the language probably meets the requirements in the condition, but that doesn't mean they're automatically in the HOA unless the CCNRs provide for the future phases to be automatically incorporated. And, and, and so then Joshua, yeah, I read that, he responded that the answer to her questions is yes, that's all there, they're included in the CCNRs, and, and then we didn't hear from her today.
Okay. And, and my, my issue, and unfortunately, I didn't get home from meetings until 5:00, and Joshua was not there. And I didn't know what Exhibit A was for the annexation, and it talked about, and perhaps Mr. Sterman's can answer this, it talked about, it said Lot 3, and a portion of Lot 2, but you know how these, there's different lots now all over the place. I didn't know if, though, that that description covered the long plat.
Cecil, can you, do you want to jump up and be part of this conversation if you can help us?
I'm not really sure we're covering up that.
Okay, so back when, quite a long time ago, 19, whenever it was, when Larry Court was around, there was a document that talked about future properties owned by the developer herself.
Right.
That could be annexed into the Peaceful Valley Association. And this was a document that had you and your wife agreeing a certain property listed in Exhibit A would be annexed, and that property was described as Lot 3 and a portion of Lot 2 with a meets and bounds description, but I, I didn't have a map to show that. And I know there's a whole lot of different lots and phases.
I don't happen to think that has anything to do with this particular plat at all.
Is, is that plat, was this plat part of the annexation is the question?
No.
Did it, did it use the word annexation?
No, I don't even know where the word annexation is coming from.
It was in the document that Joshua sent Nikki, the attorney that she asked for.
Oh.
Yeah.
It annexed into the...
Because she was talking, when she talked about, there's another bag of worms somewhere, I forget what she said.
But are you talking about annexed into the HOA?
Yeah.
That, I don't, I don't know that annexation would be a hard word for that. They just become a part of it.
There's a requirement in the, the conditions that they be part of the HOA for the people in the valley.
The attorney had wanted more documents to show how that happened, because she said it doesn't necessarily automatically happen.
Right, right, and that's where, that's where the answer.
And then Joshua, he did answer, but she never responded. I was just thinking, maybe she called Joshua.
She did not, because we were having a...
It was, it was late, I know.
I know.
Because I think it was 3:00. Yeah.
Talked to Joshua about this. Red was reading your papers, it's changed in the last couple of days, and the bottom line, when I realized he wasn't going to be here, I, we went over this, and I said, so in, according, in your interpretation, this answers, you have found information to answer Nikki's question, and feel good about the fact that that is a requirement and will be a requirement that they join, and the purpose of joining, obviously, joining the HOA is to help aid for the storm, the maintenance and upkeep of the stormwater problem.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I just didn't have that feeling. What he says doesn't actually, because he's talking about all these different maps, and, but I didn't have any of them. So, I, it just was a question for Josh.
Well, he felt that this answered Nikki's question. If you're not comfortable, or we could javel this.
No, I, I mean, I'm, I'm probably, because I don't have Nikki's answer, I'm probably going to vote, I probably won't just abstain.
Well, no, you should just vote no.
Okay, then I'll vote no, but, I mean, if she had answered it, then I would have gone.
Okay. What is the rest of it?
Such a complicated PUD and everything, and MOA, and there's so many different things, so many different layers.
How, does the rest of the council feel comfortable to go ahead with the motion?
I do.
Okay.
I would move to approve the final plat of Division 4 and Resolution 24-11 to accept all dedicated areas of subdivision.
Seconded.
Oh, I thought somebody in the audience was saying. Okay, can't help finding the question. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve, I'm sorry, this is going to be very formal, Cecil Sterman's long plat. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, opposed? Okay, four ayes, one nay. Okay, the next item is approving ordinance 796, amending Title 15 of the Building and Construction Code. You, this was on last, last, Jennifer, our last meeting, asked it to be taken to this meeting, and, okay, and if, several of you wanted to read the property, internal, International Property Maintenance Code, did everybody that wanted to do that have a chance?
Yes.
Okay, and I hope that you realize that this, this, this property code does not give the town staff some authority to just go onto private property whenever they like, and turn on the utilities whenever they like, and it's not that extreme. It's part of the international code that's used everywhere. However, is there any questions on that?
I'm just going to make a comment, and I know, we have somebody from the audience that's kind of concerned about that, and after reading it, I'm, I don't share those concerns. I feel like there's enough safeguards that those kinds of things are not going to happen. So, okay, so I'm probably going to say that.
I feel the same way. I read, read through the ordinance, and I found there are plenty of due process safeguards that made the concern this seems to be.
Yeah. Okay?
So, open for motion to recommend, a motion to adopt ordinance 796, amendment, amending Title 15, building and construction of the Cooper Town Code. Is that the way it will?
Mm-hmm. Seconded. Okay, moved by Rick, seconded by Jackie, to adopt ordinance 796, amending Title 15, Building and Construction Code for the Takuville. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
It was kind of interesting reading. I didn't read the whole thing, I just, just read the part that was applicable to the policy.
It was kind of interesting, yeah.
That's what the stuff was called.
Yeah. I know, it'd be on paper in our code, or else they'd be able to enforce. Okay, the next item on our agenda is kind of two things put together. So we need to do the ordinance first, so the first thing is to approve ordinance 797. Start time of the town council meeting, oh my gosh, we are trying to replace the words 6:30 with 6, and you do not know how many back and forths and how many times we have redone this paperwork. It's crazy. So I think Joshua, I mean Chris, on your desk, did you give it to them?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you need a copy?
No. Well, we had, we just had done the wrong format, it was our fault. So, 797 is the one that is actually changing the town code. The next, the resolution changes the town policies and procedures. So this one, the only thing that's being changed in Section 2.04.010 is changing our meeting start time from 6:00 to 6:30.
From 6:30 to 6:00.
6:30 to 6:00, oh my gosh. 6:30 to 6:00. So if you see the page attached, you will see the actual code with the red line, which we are required to do. Anybody have any questions? Anything else, Chris? No? Anybody else have any questions?
Remove approval of ordinance number 7, 7 change the meeting time for town council from 6:30 to 6 PM on a meeting day.
I second. Moved by Mike, seconded by Pat, to approve ordinance 797. Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, Jenny, five ayes.
In the previous vote, Jenny was kind of late, or it registered late. Was her vote yea or nay? In the previous vote? Okay, okay, got it, sorry.
Okay, and then the next one is the Resolution 24-0-10, which is the town council's policy procedures and rules of contact, conduct. Now this one, we were changing the time from 6:30 to 6:00, but as long as we were doing that, I kind of gave it a quick read, and you will see from the red line, I changed some, I made some corrections to some typos. In some places where it was appropriate, I changed the staff person from treasurer to deputy clerk. I didn't change any context, it was just kind of all, I have an additional typo on the page.
I don't know where we're...
It's page 5, under Section 2, first sentence, the mayor or his or her absence, the mayor pro term instead of town.
I thought you got changed.
Oh, I, well, I changed it once, but I didn't, I don't, I didn't change it there. Plued back. Okay, so then, so, okay, so we can, we can correct that.
Here.
Is that your same one?
No. The mayor on page 1 of Section 1A says valves and principles. I think that should be values and principles.
Read the title.
That's more in Europe.
Where is it?
Out.
Title. It's right here. Oh, it's on the resolution. It's on the resolution. Oh, okay, okay, it's right there. Okay. Okay. Okay.
And then in addition to that, and the rules of procedure, Section 3, under the regular meeting agenda, there's a reference there to first opportunity for audience input. I thought we had taken out first.
I saw that, but I... So, Section 3.
I remember when we did it, there's some why we took out that word.
Number 6, under, call of business of the council agenda, number 6 says first opportunity. That's the only place it says, to just say aye.
To say audience, opportunity for audience input.
So I had something too, that I found in Section 4 on that page, page 6. So I know it says there that audience input, people are supposed to give their address and that information, and I thought that we weren't supposed to ask that anymore.
We're, I believe we're not supposed to ask the address, but we still can take their name.
Maybe addresses.
Is this on the audience input? Or is it...
Yeah, audience.
A lot of other jurisdictions have you, if you're going to speak, sign in with that information, but I still think it's kind of odd because it's sitting out there.
Well, here it does say, to ensure comments are recorded properly, audience members must state their name and address clearly into the microphone, and I thought that we couldn't ask, request that anymore, to do their address. But I don't know, I might be wrong.
I guess that's...
I don't know.
I think it's important not to ask because it's...
Yes, and that's a...
It's kind of like we go on vacation, we don't want to say much.
And we found out the hard way that when the town is having a public, is having any kind of meeting, just even if it's not a legislative one, if we have a check-in sheet, a sign-in sheet that asks for their name, email, phone number, that's, that sign-in sheet is open to a public records request. And so I don't really want to do that here, since we don't usually have a lot of instances where we have several speakers who want to speak. I would just kind of, okay, but let, will Jackie, well, we can just decide not to do it.
Yeah, I just remembered we didn't do it anymore.
So, but we don't do their address, but we do their names.
But essentially, we're going to ask for their address, so if we're not going to ask for the address.
It says they must.
Yeah, take it out.
You see where I'm not going to...
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all I have.
And Rick, did you find any more corrections?
Is this the thing that you said that reported values on?
No.
Do you know, do you, do you know what he's talking about, for values versus...
I didn't see that one.
I don't see.
It's the Resolution 2410, which is 25, and it's item, Section 1A, the title, Section 1A. Who said the...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, watch. I'll, I'll get it for you, Chris.
I'm pulling it up right now.
Okay, so, got it, we got, okay, so we will, so if anybody is, wants to give any motion to say asset with, with changes, that'd be right.
I move approval, Resolution 2410 with the amendments that we've approved.
Seconded. Moved in, uh, moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2410, as amended. Last chance for corrections or discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thanks Jenny. Boy, you are really delayed. Okay, we'll watch, we'll watch for you.
You know, it was really good to go over that, it's been a long time since I've read that down.
It has been a long time. Okay, and the next thing on our agenda is to approve a contract with Jacobs for our water reuse study. Joseph, you want to take this one?
I have a difficult piece, but can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, sure. So, yeah, I'm really looking forward to this study. So, this is, again, a feasibility study. It's not, uh, it's just to identify if there's a beneficial use for effluent from the wastewater treatment plant. This will be paid for by a grant that we received from Department of Health. Yeah, so I've already presented this, I guess, when we signed the grant document, but is there any questions on what this project is?
Well, and Joe, part of, the reason we got this very nice grant from ecology is because this data has come out with new, new regulations to reduce the nutrients in our, in our discharge.
Yes, but this, this grant is actually from, uh, for shellfish recovery. So, what the, the ideal output of this would be to discharge less to Pen Cove. Again, the feasibility study is not guaranteed that we will ever not discharge Pen Cove.
But is, is this the feasibility study or also helping with some engineering?
Uh, yes, so the ideal out, so after phase one, phase one of this is, is there a beneficial use for the effluent? Is it feasible, cost effective? After that, then the phase two kicks in, and that will be some engineering and some approvals from Department of Ecology and Department of Health with some engineering on how it can be accomplished.
And then, and I'm sorry, I'm asking these questions, we just have so many grants out right now. We're working on so many grants. This is also the one that, that should we find that there is some kind of treatment or different way to handle our effluent, that ecology, not ecology, did you just say it was wrong? Oh, shellfish. That they will provide money also for construction possibly?
I would be applying for more funding for construction, but there is funding available at this time.
Okay. So, is that Department of Health?
Uh, this grant is actually from the Puget Sound Estuary, Department of Health. It's a combination of Department of Health and Department of Ecology.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions for Joe?
Oh, I know. One other, I'm sorry, one other aspect is, this is 100% grant. There's no match to this grant.
Okay, I'd like to recommend the motion to approve a professional service agreement with Jacobs for engineering services for the wastewater facility.
Second. Okay, moved by Rick, seconded by Pat to approve the professional service agreement with Jacobs. Questions or comments? All those in? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, and the next one is little, just a little one, to approve a contract with Allser for window washing services. We needed to find a new service for that, and it's for windows in the rec hall and town hall. And so, Heidi Ledger, our public works clerk, got three estimates for this, and we have Allser. And we can, you know, call them as, we can set them up on a regular schedule. We can, they're very flexible for what our needs are.
Move to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a janitorial services contract with Allser for window washing services as.
Second. Moved by Mike, seconded by Jackie to approve a janitorial service contract with Allser. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, then the next item is, I would like, I just wanted, you know, be transparent with the, with the council, and I signed this contract, and so I would like you to ratify it for me. As I said, it's for our very important software and services for our smart gov, uh, software that we have, using to take care of all permitting in town and be able to store data electronically, and it will be much, everybody can put their hands on it quicker. We can keep better track of where we are in the permit process. Customers will be able to log in and see at what stage their, their permit is at. And they will eventually be able to pay online. The planning department hopes to, they're, they're, right now, and they hope to have it available to the public in, I think he said, late October or November. But we originally bought this smart gov software through an agreement with a company named, that contract, recently brought, was purchased by a company called Granicus. And so, I compared both of the contracts, they're incredibly similar. Interestingly, Granicus is a little less expensive on, on the yearly services. So, I did, I saw no difference between them, and we needed to get the contract back to them so we could continue on with our, with the training and the report formatting and data share that we were in the middle of. Any questions on that? I would make the motion to ratify the agreement with Granicus for the town's smart gov permitting software. Moved by Jackie, seconded by Mike, to ratify the agreement with Granicus for our town's software permitting, software. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. And we are moving. The last item, action item on our business tonight is to approve the special events permit for the October activities of Kupu Lake Historic Waterfront Association that will close streets, but then Chris and I would also like to just discuss a couple other of their events this year. Chris, do you want to start us off on our, on our conversation?
Well, yay, Practical Magic Weekend. So, I've listed out the street closures for you all. Do you all want me to read them for you?
No.
No? Okay. Do those meet your approval? I believe they are the same as last year's street closures. Okay. Okay. The point that we wanted to discuss tonight was, there's been a little bit of back and forth about the use of the Johnson lot for the beer garden, how much of the Johnson lot to use, and things like that, and also the parade staging location. So, we have asked them to move the parade staging over to the portion of Coveland Street that will be closed during that period anyway, to give a bit of physical space between a horde of, what, 200 plus people, give or take? And then their beer garden festivities going on in the Johnson lot. Even like them, they're, they, I provided the map for the beer garden specifically, and they have fire pits and hot dogs and that. So, we floated the idea of seeing the Johnson lot so that families could use throughout the day some of the fire pits and get hot dogs and that kind of thing. They would not too, and they're here, someone might come in.
Also, we're going to talk about the 7 o'clock also.
Oh, yes, and they've asked, instead of closing up at 4 o'clock like last year, to close at 7 this year, which is part of why Marshall Bo asked us to move the staging a bit further away from the Johnson lot as well.
Because in the past, staging happened when the beer garden was closed.
Yeah, after it closed, yeah.
And so, now it would be at the same time.
Didn't, am I correct, last year didn't August fall on the same day as the Halloween parade?
It is.
Yeah, yeah, so the parade staging, that's, that's what it's like parade.
That's why, that's why there's this conflict, and we're trying to separate stuff, make it safe.
So, then I asked, I asked Chris to also bring it to your attention, because in the past, you guys have not been overly thrilled with having beer gardens at every single activity. And so, this would be the, the second year of a legit beer garden, the third year of that first one that was, it's not good.
Could you remind us of what, I, I think it was Bo was there, of, what, I don't remember that there were any problems.
No, there hasn't, not that I know.
Not that I'm aware of, no.
But Bo is the one that wants the big separation between, if the, if the beer garden is allowed to stay open later, he wants the big separation between his line and out and the beer garden. That makes sense.
And there's enough room between Grace and North Main for all those little?
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the initial staging area was listed as the, the park there at the corner, and then kind of the bit of Main Street that's closed there as well. So, that bit of Coveland is definitely more space. Yeah.
Does anybody want to speak? Felix, do you want to speak?
Yeah, and I'll.
Can you come up to the microphone, whoever's going to speak? No address.
I'll, I'll speak, but I might ask Dawn for, for some clarification here and there. Dawn is, uh, she's a parish owner, she's my, and I leave the beer garden, because I can't be at 10 different places at once throughout that weekend. But we are also creating some more physical separation. Dawn is doing a lot of work with making whitegate fences out of pallets that are thematically appropriate for Practical Magic, will make it look like a more adult event, will be a sort of trellis gateway, so the entire thing will be very obviously fenced in addition to the, the slip rail fencing that's already there, will be a very, very clear entrance point, and we'll have two people checking IDs at the entrance to, to very clearly, you know, show that no one who was under the age of 21 is allowed in this area. So, we're, we're taking things to make it more secure than it was last year, but there weren't particularly any issues last year that I can recall as well.
Well, you closed at 4.
And, yeah, we, we closed, um, a little bit after 4. The, the reason we're asking for a later time this year is, um, in the, in the past, both last year and the, the one that happened before was linked with a, a bike ride event, and so we wanted to be, we and the people who organized it before us, wanting the beer garden to be an earlier event, so the bikers could finish and get a beer. What we saw is fewer bikers and more people that happen to be in town for Practical Magic anyway for the weekend, wanting to get away from the crowd. But we also had restaurants that were completely full, so we're trying to remove a little bit of the burden on, on restaurants, have an outdoor space for people to drink alcohol in the vicinity of Historic Kupu Lake as well. Requested later time, because we didn't see it start to pay up until we were trying to close down at the wedding, so we wanted to fill the, the demand that was existing by requesting a, a later time.
Well, I, I really appreciate the idea of putting up, you know, some kind of barrier, you know, physical, and I, I think, at least I had some concerns last year, and I personally don't have any this year. Look forward to it being successful with no problems.
And so, is it going to be dark at 7?
Yep.
Not quite. The sunset is like 6:40, so it'll still be twilight-ish, but not, it won't be dark dark at 7 o'clock.
Dance last.
The dance goes until 8:00.
Yeah, and that's not totally pitch black when that's.
No, it's, it's light enough that everyone can make their cars. I, I do also have a crossing car lined up for this year, so I've got 93 will be posted up with the crosswalk to make sure that people are making it safely across.
Oh, which, which crosswalk?
The, the crosswalk closest to the beer garden, so that one where cars go and head fast in that area, although a lot of the streets, no, that street a little bit backed up, I didn't, so that's someone crossing crosswalk on Main Street to keep people using the sidewalks and using the crosswalk and not just running across into, into traffic.
And so, then the only entrance to the lot is just the one-to-one entrance?
Just the one.
And so, they're going to be obviously watching for people trying to leave with beer when they want to go watch their kids in the parade?
Exactly.
Okay. So, I guess the question, so just make sure you all know that they're given, so the lot, the entire lot will be for adults only for that whole day, and staying open three hours later. I know that this group, especially because of Muscle Fest, their volunteers are very well-trained in all the liquor, checking ID, all the Washington State rules for volunteers.
And you all are wistbanding, right?
Yeah, we're wistbanding.
You're welcome.
Wistbands for people in the beer garden.
Oh, okay.
Oh, and the bright orange cups.
Oh, wow.
Yes, thematically appropriate, and we already know it's a bullshit, anyone trying to sneak out, um, pretty tough to, pretty tough to hide.
Okay. So, our motion is strictly for the, the street closures, but, so are we all on board with the stay open till 7 and the, using the entire Johnson lot? Well, what, it will be whatever, whatever we decide will be in their conditions, but this motion is kind of strictly for street closures, because that's all legally you guys have to approve, but I still wanted to.
And have the beer garden. Yeah, and then you approve the special event conditions.
Yeah. So, you guys good with the, with the 7 o'clock?
I am.
Good with using the whole lot?
Yeah.
Okay. Okey dokey. I'm going to take a motion for the street closures.
Okay, make a motion, approve special event number, we get it, SEP 24-019, and street closures for 2024 Practical Magic Weekend.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve special event 24-019 for 2024 Practical Magic Weekend. Last chance for questions or comments. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Jenny. Opposed? Anybody opposed? Okay, passes unanimously, Chris. Okay. Thank you for being here, if we have questions. The cheese stands a lot. Okay, um, we only have council reports and discussions. Does anybody need a break for five minutes? Are we good?
Keep marshaling on?
Yeah. Okay. So, council reports. Jackie, you have?
I just have one quick one that, you know, I've shared with you all before, that tourism group is redoing our interlocal to become a 501(c)(6), so that it can be more kind of independent, and we're just about done with that, so that will be coming to the mayor's, the council's, and coming for everybody's signature. We're almost done with that.
Are you a 501(c)(3) right?
No. We're nothing, right? We're just, we're quasi-governmental, we were under the county.
So, does this make you not under the county anymore?
Right. We would, so, but, yeah, we would not be, we would be our own entity, but, so we would receive the money directly from the county. The town would still pay the money to the county, and then we would receive the money from the county. The, the biggest thing that it will help us with is that right now, we can't apply for grant, a lot of grants from like tourism and other places, because we, we don't have our own EIN number, and the county will punish your EIN number, because they say, that gets so confusing, they kind of say, we're not really part of the county, and, and yet in other terms, we are, and it's, it's, it's just off, almost all other tourism groups in the state are 501(c)(6)'s.
Okay.
And then have agreements with the municipalities.
Does that allow you also to lobby?
Oh, my, yeah, no, we haven't really talked about that. The biggest thing is the grants. We figured we lost out on like, oh, well over $100,000 this year of grants that we would have gotten, but we couldn't apply.
Is your organization one of the ones that like the county pays your bills, that does your making? So, will they continue?
No, then we'll have to hire somebody to do that, but we pay, the county does that, but we pay. So, we're, the money's going to kind of be awash, we'll hire somebody for about what we pay the county.
Wow.
Yeah.
Well, that's the news. Yeah.
Good luck.
Yeah, well, good luck. Hopefully, it'll, it'll pass all municipalities and the county. Hopefully, we'd like to have it all in place by the first of the year.
So, so like the town has to approve it?
Each town has to approve it and the county, because the interlocal is between municipalities and the county, yeah.
So, does that mean the interlocal will still? So does that mean the interlocal will still be there, but it's just a different entity that'll be giving it?
Okay, they'll still be there, and, and we're not changing much of what's in there, we're keeping almost, we're updating a few, a few little things, but the biggest thing is becoming the 501(c)(6). So we have an attorney who, who, her specialty is really helping agencies apply for, or helping organizations apply for both that status. So she's doing that for us, and then I'm, we met this morning, the executive board met, and we went through it, so it's getting real close to coming to everybody, and we're hoping that everybody will pass it. So, I mean, we've talked with, Phil Jonathan is the commissioner on, on the board, and she's in favor of it, but again, that, that two or three. I'm hoping this group will be our Oak Harbor rep from the Oak Harbor town, so we'll. This house. Landman will also.
Is this, and it's, you've checked that, that the municipalities in the county can turn over taxpayer money to a 501(c)(3) six?
They do it, they do it all in the state, we're the only ones that have organized the way we are.
Okay.
But we have, it's in the, it would be in the, in the locals, it would be an agreement, and we have to, we have to give reports, just like we couldn't do now, you know, about how, which is. Yeah.
Great.
So when that comes, I'll explain it further when it comes to you, and then you'll get it up to all of us.
Okay.
Great idea.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be much better.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, that's all I have.
Michael?
I think we're bored.
Okay. Okay. Dan? Rick? Okay. Jenny?
Nothing to report.
No report, okay. Okay, so the last item I have put on the agenda is to have a discussion with the council, this is not an action item. Jesse's so happy she can't sit still and might smile. The Coopville Historic Waterfront Association applied for a PSE grant to completely upgrade the audio, visual, sound, whatever you want to call it, equipment in the rec hall. And they want to do, do this because of basically two weekends, Practical Magic Weekend, so they have like a professional setup for their Practical Magic movies, and Muscle Fest for their chef demonstrations. Okay, but the, the equipment would belong to the town, yes? Okay, and so we would be responsible for it all the time. And so I had, was supposed to have had this conversation with Mark Whacker before this meeting started, and I didn't get that done. So Jesse, the executive director, Jesse Levesque, is here, and Mark Whacker is here. They did receive the grant, they want to, and I have put the quote, the latest quote in front of you, Mark Whacker has gotten, has been their person that has gotten all the, made the decisions on what kind of equipment it should be, decided what is the right for our, for our rec hall. And he's got, you know, as a musician, he has a lot of experience with this, and he is also. Wow, is that correct? That's correct, right, yeah. So the reason why we're adding this is because I didn't get it on, I didn't talk to Mark in time, and they want to order it in time to get it installed for their Practical Magic movies. It's lovely, it's a wonderful gift, I love it, the, the only thing I'm worried about, and I've talked to Joe Groban, and so Joe, this is going to be your great chance to ask Mark direct questions. You know, as you know, we have a really low key, we have two big speakers, but except for these events, seem to be enough sound for the rec hall. Joe and I have always wanted to put in a projector in the rec hall to make it easier for people having meetings in there. Joe recently installed a monitor on the big screen wall, which most people are using, because during the day, the rec hall does not get targeted for things to show on that big screen. And, you know, if you've ever been, if you've ever been in charge of a, a, an event there, you open a box, and there's a piece of tape that says, press on, and then there's another piece of tape that says, don't touch anything else. And you don't know how many calls we get when somebody smacked in the middle of an event after hours, then, I can't get the microphone to work. And there's nothing we can make it more simple than it is right now, but we want to provide that service in our rec hall, but if, but if we can't keep it running and they can't make it work, it becomes, not a positive, it becomes a problem. I talked to Tony about this, Tony Recker is one of our public works guys that gets to these calls on the event line, and he said, he did, most of the time, the system is so simple, and he's done this for so long, he knows what people are panicking and doing, and what the pressing is messing up the system. So he said, normally, most of the time, you can talk, talk the person through it, over the phone, and get it to work out. And so my only concern with this lovely gift is that how much more difficult it is to, to turn it on and off, and hitting the button on your wireless mic to turn your wireless mic on. Because I have to worry about that for the crew and customer satisfaction in the rec hall. And so I was supposed to have this conversation with Mark before the meeting denied, and I did not do that. So Mark Whacker's here, I have written down on, on their quote, some of my questions, and we, and then Mark can provide whatever else he, he thinks will help us, and Joe can ask his questions. Come on up, Mark. So one of my questions, I just talked quickly to Joe tonight, one of my questions was, is all this equipment here on this, on this sheet, is this going to be in addition to the system we have or replace it? And I believe your answer is it's in addition to.
It'll be in addition to, will we replace the mixer currently? The, the screen used there will be a 10-channel mixer, and it'll be as simple as, again, turning it on, turning it off, you know, plugging in your microphone. We'll use the two speakers we have now, but we'll have two additional speakers, so it'll run all the way to the back, so.
Okay, we'll close your microphone a little bit, and so Joe can hear you, in case he has questions. Are the two new speakers going to be in the other end of the rec hall?
Yes, correct.
Pointing in towards the rec hall?
Pointing in towards the rec hall.
Okay.
So there'll be four speakers.
Okay. So can we, we need wireless mics in there. Will our wireless mics that we have, you, work with that?
Your wireless mic will work in this.
It will, with the, the new system. Okay, and then we also need a, a wired mic, and we have one, that will also work?
That will also work, yes, correct.
Okay. And, oh my God, the screen, I thought they were buying just a larger monitor, like what Joe has placed on the wall right now. They're buying an, did you say 11-foot wide?
Yes.
11-foot wide pull-down screen.
More than wide format videos.
Yeah.
Or movie night, that's would be something like that, or than that eight-foot now.
Yeah.
My question would be, will it cover the windows, there are two windows on either side?
It will, you know, during operation, because the screen will be pulled down, and then it'll be put back up after.
Because those windows have always, screens always been inside and outside together.
Yeah, so it would be the same.
And so, and so, this is the only project I understand, probably won't ever. The problem with their screening right now, the reason why everybody is using that monitor, that, the small monitor that, that Joe put up on the wall, is because during the day, you cannot make the rec hall dark enough. When people are using their own personal projectors on that screen, but you're saying with this really good projector mounted in the ceiling, that even during the day, the picture is going to show up on this big screen?
Even during the day, yes, yep.
That's going to be great, because I've tried, I've. Presentations.
I do.
Yeah.
So you can see the.
You can't see anything.
Everybody's been using that, in the east, has been using that monitor that Jill put up on the wall.
And there'll be a big mic there, because when I come and plug in their laptop to do a presentation, to use the, use the projector, so they will be able to plug in their own. To screen, but it's made to be in, in daylight, with no covers on the windows, we have no shades or anything, so.
Joe, look at that, he just saved us money in our budget this year. We had, we had money in our budget to buy new shades for the rec hall windows. Yeah, which we still might need to do, but, yeah. Joseph, do you have any questions about this?
It's not so much questions, it's just when it's installed, I want one of my men there, just to make sure the wiring is getting routed correctly and that we're anchoring everything properly.
Absolutely.
When, when you ordered this, Mark, how long is it going to take to build it?
Two to four weeks, so there's a chance that maybe I.
Okay.
Although I, I guess I do have one other request, Mark, and that's, that there's a cabinet that can be locked. If it, if it's larger than what's, than what we have now. Just so we can. Mixer.
It's, it's smaller, it's, you know, we have enough, we will be able to use a locking cabinet.
Okay. Oh, oh, four, two to four, two to four weeks.
It's coming in two weeks, I think you need four weeks as well, I asked that.
Okay, we, you, Chris?
Yes.
Would you look first thing in the morning on the rec hall calendar, which is almost full for October? See what days would be available for installation? How long does it take?
It takes several hours.
Oh, but you could do it in one day?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Could you do it in half a day?
Possibly.
Well, we'll look first thing in the morning to see. Available.
I think it'd be best, we'll, we can come through the mornings or afternoons, or whatever works as a schedule.
Okay. Okay, we'd probably look for a morning if Joe wants one of his guys to be there.
Yeah, okay.
For the projection screen, it's going to be up, you know, down, so it takes the events to kind of install them.
Well, it's a lot, it's speakers, it's, it's a lot of things, yes.
Yeah, there'll be some work involved.
Pardon me?
There'll be some work involved.
Yeah, yeah, I bet. Okay, so Joe, are you good with this, every, the council's good with this?
Absolutely. Great, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, this is a very nice gift, and they're like, and the people in the town's property, you said, after it's installed? Okay, another good thing, Mark, that would be fabulous, this doesn't have to happen before Practical Magic Weekend, but if you, maybe we'll send our, our guys, if you get the calls on nights and weekends, to come and fix things, give them a little tutorial, or, you know, even though it sounds easy. Let them know, okay, what, what happens if the person moves the buttons that they're not supposed to? You know, like if we could mark those on where they're supposed to be?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, I'm sorry to sound like I'm crazy, but this has to be bulletproof. Okay, thank you so, so much.
Thank you.
Jesse, thank you. Very, very nice gift. We will, the council doesn't need to vote on this, but at some point in the next month or two, I will do a resolution to formally accept the donation, because we need to do that. So we'll let you know when that happens. All right.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if the council doesn't have anything else, that's, we're adjourned.